Welcome to the meeting of Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools. Today is Monday, August 24, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. And the school board meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Hangouts Meet. It is being livestreamed by BCTV and will be replayed per the usual BCTV replay schedule. There is no public recognition tonight during this Hangouts meeting. However, if you wish to contact the school board, please send an email to schoolboard@isb271.org. Hello, let's go with a roll call. So all board members who are present, please indicate. Director B.
Here.
Director Bennett.
Here.
Director Olson.
Here.
Director Sorum.
Here.
Director Starks.
Here.
Director Stegaf.
Here.
And Corman is here, so all board members are present tonight. We'd like to move approval of the agenda.
So move Sorum.
Second, Stegaf.
Okay, it was moved by Sorum and second by Stegaf. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Director Bibi. Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Stegaf.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. The agenda has been approved. Now we're going into part A of the agenda, which contains board business, minutes, personal actions, then finance. So anybody would like to make a motion to approve that part A of the agenda?
So move Stegaf.
Is there a second?
Bibi.
Okay, so it was moved by Stegaf and second by Director Bibi. All those in favor of approving part A of the agenda, please say aye. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sorum.
Aye.
Starks.
Aye.
Stegaf.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Part A has been approved. Now we're gonna move into part B of the agenda. And the first item that we have is donations. Will someone please like to read the resolution?
Director Bibi.
Yes, go ahead, Director Bibi.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts donations as indicated in the background in the amount of $50,591.10.
Is there a second?
Second, Stegaf.
Thank you. And for this, I'd like to call Mr. Raskovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a monthly resolution that we provide the board of all donations that have been provided. The detail of the donations, some of the bigger items in this one is some donations for helping out with the lacrosse program and also helping out with the food service both in from during COVID and then also are helping low-income students. The mind, what will happen at the end of the board meeting, there'll be a scroll of all the donations and at that point in time, the actual names and how much will be, go through at that point in time.
Thank you. There any questions or comments? It doesn't look like there's any questions, so let's move to vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Stegaf.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This resolution has been approved, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next in the agenda, we have distance learning with support. Typical day schedule. And I'd like to call on Andrew Cubas, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching. And I understand that you have, a lot of people have to be presenting with you, so please indicate who you are and what your title is so that people will be willing, can know who you are. Okay, so Mr. Cubas.
Thank you. Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, viewing public, board members. We're here tonight to give you an update of what a day in the life might look like as for a student in distance learning. After last week's vote to go to distance learning, we've been working hard at getting everything ready and we're excited about Thursday night when we have our community engagement session, where we can go into great detail about what distance learning might look like as well as answer some questions. The objective of tonight is to help you govern, keep you up in altitude, and show you some of the information that's going to be happening around our scheduling. So again, our objective is to provide information and an overview of distance learning 2.0 plus supports. I've got some friends with me here. I've got Beth Flotmeyer, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Jennifer McIntyre, our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Jason Anderson, Principal at Jefferson High School, Brian Ingeman, Principal at Oak Grove Middle School, and Brian Klein, Principal at Oak Grove Elementary School. So we wanted to have our principals here to help walk you through that schedule as those are the leaders who are going to be implementing at that level, how these schedules get put into place. So we're excited about sharing that part. I want to give you a couple familiar slides that you've seen in the past. I know our public has as well around distance learning 2.0. So just as a matter of grounding, once again, on balance, when we came to our distance learning 1.0, while I would say there's not a school district in the nation who did an amazing job with distance learning, relatively speaking, we did fairly well. We received lots of feedback from our students, families, and teachers about how we could get better, and we've incorporated that feedback into our distance learning 2.0. But we certainly understand with 1.0 that there were students, families, and quite frankly, teachers who were left behind for lots of different reasons, and we've covered that many, many times. The changes into distance learning 2.0 have us doing, just making sure that we're capturing all of our students, making sure that we have provisions in place to help out. And so what I wanted to share, just a matter is to form before we get into the schedules, is just some updates. And so if you recall, however you want to look at it, late spring, early summer, the governor and the MDE sent an edict to school districts to say that you should be ready with three different plans. You should have a traditional plan in case we go back. You should have a distance learning plan in case that's the way we need to go, and you should have a hybrid plan. Now Bloomington also came up with a flex plan and a Bloomington online school plan, but those three, the traditional distance learning and the hybrid plan, we were given a mandate that we should have those plans put together. We started right away and we had upwards of 50 teachers with us helping on those three different areas, trying to figure out what are these three plans. At some point, knowing that we have an organizational capacity, we started to think about what's the best way to use our resources. And so from a traditional standpoint, as I've said before, we've done traditional for 100 years. We knew how that would probably look, and so we knew that we began that planning, but we didn't have to necessarily be full speed ahead on traditional. Distance learning, we also knew we had done, had an experience in that. It was hybrid that rose to the area where we needed to put a lot of our thought in place, simply because we had never done it before. Nobody had ever really done it before. And so the bulk of the work went into the hybrid planning. But we knew all along that whatever came out of that hybrid group, we could easily transfer to traditional and distance learning, and that's indeed what has happened. And so as we got closer to making a decision, what we've done now is brought all of those groups and those philosophies together. So when it comes to things that we'll be talking about around synchronous and asynchronous learning and assessment and grading, many of that, much of that work, sorry, was done in our hybrid group, who really did a lot of work into research and planning to make sure that what they had put in place was the right thing. So credit for a lot of our success in distance learning 2.0 to that hybrid group who did the pioneering work. What I want to go to today is I want to have our three principals. So we'll start with Mr. Klein from Oak Grove Elementary School, and then he'll hand it off to Mr. Ingeman from Oak Grove Middle School and then Dr. Anderson at Jefferson High School. We want to just, as we promised last week, spend a little bit of time just going over what a student's schedule might look like, what might a day in the life look like. From then, Jennifer McIntyre will talk to us about how that might look for a special education student. I'll talk to us about how that might look for an English language learner, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Brian Klein to talk to us about the elementary student's schedule in distance learning.
Madam Chair, sorry, Brian. Madam Chair, could I suggest that we have the presentation by this elementary principal and then questions about that one, then go to the middle school and then questions about that one, and then on the senior high, or would that be too complex? Director Cubas.
We would be happy to do whatever the pleasure of the board.
Would the board prefer to do it that way? So that we're able to ask questions as we go through this presentation? If you're okay with that, please leave a thumbs up. They only see one, two, three. Okay, don't be shy. Here I go. I can see you all. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Director Sorum.
Okay, good evening, board. Again, I'm Brian Klein, Principal at Oak Grove Elementary, speaking tonight on behalf of all my elementary principal colleagues. I'll walk you a little bit through what distance learning 2.0 will look like for an elementary student. Know that this is an example of what it can look like for one student. This is not what it will look like for every student, but all of these pieces will be a part of every student's individual schedule. So as a group, and I was part of that hybrid work group that Mr. Cubas referenced, working with Director Flotmeyer as well on that, to balance out a student's day, recognizing that to do distance learning well, you need times where your student, the elementary child is in front of the computer, directly connected with their teacher and their peers in the classroom, doing what we call synchronous learning. But then there are also times when the student is not connected with that. It's the kind of offline time. That offline time might be online, so I don't want to confuse you, but there might be times then when the student has that asynchronous learning where they are off the structured time with the teacher and have time to then do the work on their own with the support of the people in their home, right, family or potentially childcare. So what we want is consistent pieces though. And so that first part, that 9 to 9:30, that's a consistent thing. It's called morning meeting. We do that in traditional school, right? Where we start and we get all of our students together and we sit down and we have conversations. We greet them, we talk about our day. We give them an agenda of what the learning's gonna look like. We connect the previous day's learning to what today's learning's going to be. We help set that good social-emotional tone for the classroom, the environment, and we discuss any problems that are going on. And we work as a collective group to kind of talk through all those things. So morning meeting is a key part of our social-emotional learning approach, and that is going to be a consistent thing that we're gonna have all of our teachers doing to start their day with their students. That is a synchronous learning opportunity, so all the kids would be in front of their computer with their peers and with their teacher doing that. After that is when we then transition into synchronous learning in small groups. And so we know at the elementary level, we go whole group, and then we get into small group partners and then individual work. So we're doing that as well in a distance learning model. And during that time, so for example, for this student, that would be 9:30 to 10 o'clock. For another student, it might be 10 to 10:30, or another student, it might be 10:30 to 11. So that's gonna depend on the small group that the teachers create to put that student in with a set of peers that's gonna match the skills that they are trying to work on for that day or that unit. Within that small group time, the teacher is going to have kind of what we call active learning, where it's not necessarily direct instruction. Actually, direct instruction can be done synchronous, but it can also be done in asynchronous learning, where the teacher is giving out that five to eight-minute burst of direct teaching. The synchronous time is really gonna be meant to more have that active participation with the kids to keep them fully engaged, to have conversation and discourse, and make sure that the kids are not just sitting there and listening to the teacher for a half hour. That is not effective practice. And so we need to make sure that synchronous learning is interactive time, and if it's a small group, it's better, right? As a former classroom teacher, I could tell you, to do that in distance learning with, you know, a handful of students, far more effective than to try to do that with 24 kids in your class. So every student is going to have that small group instruction time in reading or math, and then there's going to be the asynchronous time when they're away from the teacher, and the teacher will have created activities and lessons for the students to do in that time. That might, the example might be, the teacher created, say, a five-minute video that the students watch, and at the end of it, there's a prompt for them to engage in learning. So that might be to write down something or to do a writing. That might be to go look at their math journal and complete a certain math problem or page. That might be to go and engage in a conversation with another student in their class. And so teachers are gonna balance that and connect these pieces, right? So the synchronous learning, when they're with the student, will align with the asynchronous learning that they're doing, and then vice versa. So that's what we do in traditional schools, so that's what we're trying to replicate in the distance learning model. We're also providing time, right, for the families and everyone to have that break too, because we don't, just like in school, we build in breaks, brain breaks, body breaks, to just have that break in the middle of their day to decompress and to kind of complete any work that they need to that happened in the morning. In the afternoon, you're again going to see those synchronous small groups of math or reading or potentially other supports, such as special education, English language supports or interventions. Those check-ins can happen as well. This doesn't mean that every student is gonna have one morning synchronous learning and 1:00 PM synchronous learning. It means we're gonna do everything we can in the building to balance the schedules and work with our families to create a healthy balance throughout a child's day that starts with the core instruction from the classroom teacher, but then also those additional supports that they might get from support professionals in our building. Again, in the afternoon, you're also gonna have those asynchronous times where students just have, here's your assignment, here's the lesson or the activity that the teacher has created for you to watch or engage in, and then here's the work you need to do as the output from that lesson. So and then, of course, we've heard back from families too that they just want to make sure they have access to teachers at a set time as well to ask questions, either from the student or the parent who's helping them. And so we also are gonna make sure that we close out every afternoon with that dedicated kind of office hours time, if you will, that teachers are available for one-on-one check-ins with a student or a family to make sure that they can help the students troubleshoot anything that they're having in their learning. So that is kind of one example of what a student's day is. It's meant to balance the online in front of the screen with the teacher to the offline, which is also potentially work completely away from the computer, but also could still be on the computer, but just not with your teacher. Questions about that?
Anybody have any questions? Director Olson.
Hi, Principal Klein. Thank you. So I'm just curious about the specialist fitting in here because I just happened to take a webinar today on the importance of music for therapy, self-expression, and emotional outlet. And I thought about how important that is during this time, and I'm sure art is the same in physical education, you know, getting, being physically active is all good for emotional health. So I just wanted to know how the specialists are fitting into the schedule. Thank you.
Absolutely. So we're still working out some of the details of specialists, but know that specialists are also going to be creating regular content for students and that it's going to be a mix of synchronous and asynchronous as well. That's going to be worked to bounce in there. So, right, so for example, if you are the Oak Grove Elementary PE teacher, there are going to be days when you are creating asynchronous content for your group of students that you're working with. But then there's also gonna be synchronous times where you are checking with them to say, the skill that we are working on, potentially throwing a ball, how is that going? Do you have the resources and materials you need to do that? So specialists are going to follow the same pattern of having synchronous and asynchronous activities, and we're not limiting any of that when it comes to the elementary students. They're all going to still get access to their core specialists on a very regular basis, because that is a part of our core learning at the elementary level.
Okay, thank you. Director Bibi.
As I look at this schedule, the time that they would have in front or connecting with the teacher looks like it's only potentially an hour and a half a day. And maybe not even that. And from letters that I have received through email and talking with parents, I don't think they're gonna be satisfied with that. I think they're looking for more connection. Like maybe even where you've got from 1:30 to 3:00 asynchronous learning, would there be an end-of-the-day check-in with students and families? Maybe not everybody will be able to get a hold of the teacher from 3:00 to 3:20, especially if one parent would take all of that time. Is it possible that during the 11 to 1:00 time, that the teacher could have some availability? I'm listening to parents and I'm trying to think like parents and what they want. And then they definitely want more connection with their child and the teacher and other students. So how will that actually happen if the way it looks now is only an hour and a half of their day?
Sure. So note that this is also the student-facing side, not the parent-facing side, or excuse me, not the teacher's side of it. And so the teacher is far more synchronous than this. And so part of the conversation is also about not just quantity of time in front of the student, but quality. And we know that when you break up into small groups, so for example, if I'm the first grade teacher and I have six kids with me for a half hour, I potentially can probably go a lot deeper with that group of six students in a half hour than I might be able to do with 24 kids in front of a Google meets. And so part of it is the strategic decision of, we're gonna get content out to them in different ways, which is synchronous whole group, but also an asynchronous small group, and then check in with them, and then follow up and get right to the meat of that coaching and that feedback model where they're showing us what they can do, and we can immediately respond and get right into it. And so we're trying to maximize the time we have with kids, because we also learn from in the spring, when one teacher is trying to host 24 kids, just like at an open house, when all the parents come in, one parent might dominate that time. And so then it's how do we effectively get to every individual child and give them what they need? And so breaking it into those small group chunks, well, yes, it doesn't, it means that the child might not be in front of a teacher for three hours a day, but the time that they are in front of them is very tailored to where their individual skills are at and giving them very explicit supports that are gonna be at the level they need. So I think, I would say that's, I believe, the kind of philosophical approach that we are taking with this.
Do anybody else have any questions? Give us your question related to this one. Okay, so you missed your again. I'm sorry, I'm a little delayed because my internet is a bit limited, so it takes a few seconds before I can actually see you. I can hear you very well. Director Sorum.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for speaking on behalf of all those unique and individual principals that we have working with this program. You know, it seems to me that from K to 5 that we have, there's gonna be a lot of differences in the whole nature of families. And reference to Beth, you know, I've received a lot of calls too. And I have to speak from my experience being a grandfather of eight grandchildren, five in the Bloomington schools in elementary, middle, and high school. And just knowing how some of the smaller ones, all of their parents are essential workers, so they won't be home to deal with it. So once again, as I've said before, the grandparents are gonna have to step up and/or neighbors or meet group-wide, you know, if there's gonna be some kind of like pod or whatever it is like that. And so as we deal with these students, some are going to be okay with it and some are gonna say, I don't have to listen to you, grandpa, or whatever might be the situation. So the schedule that you're showing might be different for a lot of the students?
Yes, so it also depends on the needs of that child, right? So if a child is receiving, say, English language supports and special education supports, there are going to be more of those green synchronous chunks potentially in their day or scattered throughout their entire week. And so it's also the all-some-few model, right? What can we realistically give all children as the best quality we can give them? And then for the some and few that need even more, how do we continue to give them even more? But with also being mindful that we can't overwhelm them either, right? It's not good to have them sitting there on an entire day logged in staring at their teacher because that's gonna be really tough to keep them engaged and focused, and that's just, that's a challenge as well. And so it's that whole balance of giving every child what they need. And I think the approach, not I think, I know that the approach we're taking with this is be very strategic, be very purposeful and mindful about what you're doing. And those times that you have those kids in front of you, that small group of kids, is when you can really go hard and really go deep. As a former first grade teacher, I'll tell you, the most effective time of my day was my guided reading block, where I was meeting with small groups of children for 20 minutes a day because I could really hammer home exactly what we were learning in the whole group and learn from them when they were showing me what they could do or what they were struggling with, because it was just me and a couple kids in front of me. So I could be very nimble in response to their needs. That's harder to do when you're 24 kids in front of you, especially virtually, when they're all trying to talk or not talk at the same time. So to me, this is about, less is a lot more, because you can go so much deeper with what you're trying to accomplish in that time. And we have to balance it, right? The reality is for some families, this is not gonna be enough. They want more teacher time, and for some, this is going to be too much time, right? That they're gonna have to balance it. So we're trying to find that sweet spot of how can we hold families tight? We need your kid online with us at this exact time, because this is when we're gonna really get to them. And here's where you have flexibility in your day, because you're trying to balance your whole life or potentially multiple distance learning students, that you have some flexibility to navigate your entire day. I will tell you, this is a significant ramp up of what it was in April and May when it comes to synchronous learning with a teacher.
Thank you. Any other questions? Director Bibi. Director Bibi, your microphone is...
First, because she hasn't answered the question.
Okay, what I'm gonna ask board members is if you can put it in the comments box if you have a question, so I can read your name, because I can't see you all like in real time. I'm sorry. Okay, Director Olson, is that you that has a question?
It was Director Starks, is that okay?
Director Starks, go ahead, yes, please.
Okay. So Principal Klein, I know that at the very beginning, you did preface this by saying this is just a, you know, snapshot for a particular child. But do you know for our two elementary schools that in traditional learning, start at different times, Ridgeview and Hillcrest? Will their start times also be different? Or are we starting all elementaries at the same time for distance learning?
Speaking of those two, right, Ridgeview, I think it's Ridgeview and Hillcrest. I don't know, I think it's a minor difference, 10 minutes, I think, for Ridgeview and maybe 20 for more for Hillcrest. Honestly, I cannot tell you exactly where they're gonna start their day, but I know once they start it, it's going to flow in the similar way, that we're gonna start with that morning meeting and work from that. So I can't tell you exactly if they're gonna keep to their school schedule times.
Thank you. Director Bennett, do you have a question?
Yeah, sure. I had a follow-up question about the specialist, or the rotation anyway. It was my understanding that when we were looking to do hybrid, that the specialist rotation was gonna be kind of like a two-week rotation where they had the same specialist for two weeks. And the idea was, you know, to have less spread and less people interacting and all that stuff, which made sense. So I'm wondering, is that same system going to be... So I'm wondering, is that same system going to be moving forward now that we're in distance learning? Or what is the specialist uh schedule gonna look like?
Yes, for shortening that. So uh, these are things you're hearing, I think, probably even before uh specialists are hearing it. Um, but the, the, the plan or the premise behind that was absolutely to say our specialists were being, were potentially going to be. Uh, connected with every student that was coming into the building. And so the concerns about their health, right? And, and compared to the classroom teachers that had that smaller exposure. And so we did look at saying, well, we're gonna stretch it out to two weeks. Uh, the latest conversations and we're gonna have more of these with our specialists to make sure this makes sense um for, for the whole group. But reducing that to even say one week at a time. Um, that still helps with consistency and flow for, I think, a family to know, right? All right, my child's going to have art this week. And then next week they're gonna have PE. Um, but it also allows the um, the teachers to really laser focus on one class for that entire week. And, and really make sure that their lessons for all the days of that week are really aligned with where that class is at. So it's that same premise that we started with, but now that we're in distance learning compared to hybrid, we're gonna shorten that. Um, so our specialists get uh, get to see the kids quicker, if you will, right? So it's not potentially uh, four weeks into the year when they're seeing that, that third specialist.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Director Steiger, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I just have a, a quick follow up um from Director Stark's question. So um, if those schools are gonna have a different time than this schedule. I'm assuming that the principals and the building leadership team are making those decisions. Um, when they're going to start, but when will the parents be notified? When that is, I'm assuming that's coming from the individual school, but I'm sure they're wondering when they're gonna find out exactly. When they need to check in. So when will they be notified?
As soon as possible, right? So as soon as we are all saying, yep, this is, this is good. This is the Bloomington way and the Bloomington approach. Uh, principals are gonna start communicating this all out. Um, teachers are already um crafting plans to have our virtual meet and greet conferences with families. And at that, they're going to walk through everything. They're gonna walk through, here's what a typical day for your student looks like. Do you, do you know exactly how to access all the technology tools that we're using for distance learning? What is the best way to communicate with you as a family? Um, when you're looking at this schedule, do you see any concerns that we can help work with right now? Um, so in those thirty minute kind of virtual meet and greets with every family. That is going to be that one on one time for the teacher to really walk through this with every single family. Before school starts and make sure that if they have any questions, um, we know about it. Or right, and, and we can't necessarily tailor make every student's schedule to the family's schedule. That's just not possible, right? We can't do that. But if we know before the year even starts that, oh. Uh, I'm gonna really have a hard time with that synchronous learning from nine thirty to ten because that's the time we transition our child to here or to there. We can work with that and see what we can do, right? So I, I, I can't, I don't like to over promise and under deliver. But the reality is we're gonna present this to all of our families in those meet and greets. Walk them through every component of it and make sure they have a good understanding of it before September eighth.
Thank you.
Here BB.
My question is, um, you know, back to the synchronous time. In looking at that, if you're working with small groups um with different differentiated instruction. Would there be some students that um have like maybe fifteen minutes? So there's two groups. Or are there some students that they won't have synchronous learning at that time? Um, so that maybe during the asynchronous time at ten o'clock, maybe they would have synchronous learning? Is it like something that can be flipped back and forth to allow for more synchronous group times?
Yes, uh, absolutely, right? That, that's when we start to piece this whole thing together. And say, what, what are the support pieces for every child? And I mentioned, you know, English language teachers and special education teachers, but we're also talking parents, right? And, and other people in our building who could potentially be people who connect and reach out with our students and say. Let's help fill any kind of learning or educational gaps that we have. And you're absolutely right. So um, this child as an example, might just go from nine to nine thirty synchronous with the morning meeting. And nine thirty to ten o'clock synchronous, then with their classroom teacher for reading support. And then it might transition from to ten to ten thirty with their special education teacher. Who might work with them for a half hour in reading. And so um, again, for some of our students, um, this is like a minimum. And then it just goes up from there to, to greater levels depending on what their needs are.
Director BB, this is um Beth Blotmeyer, Director of Critical Instruction. Uh, so along the same lines with what Mr. Klein was just explaining. In the teacher's schedule, they have time in their schedule for at least five to six synchronous small group. So that's what you're not seeing in this schedule. So in their schedule, they have time to have synchronous times throughout the day for at least five to six groups. And then while they're not meeting with the teachers, when they can be doing their asynchronous. Or that can be done at any time during the day. If they need to not be like sitting at the kitchen table doing things, they can do stuff at night. If they need their parents' help or whatever. And so to kind of go also along with Director Sorm's question. One of the things, one of the reasons that we are also making sure that we're taking a look at this synchronous learning time. Is to make sure that daycare providers, grandparents, whoever is watching the children. Can also um be able to follow that schedule. So um, those are the kinds of things that we looked at when putting these schedules together.
Thank you so much for that extra picture.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Klein, can you tell us a little bit more about um the kind of technology platforms that the kids will be using? Or the teachers will be using with the kids as well as um uh feedback, what kind? Or, or how teachers are planning on giving feedback to individual families or students? And when would they have time to do so? And also, um, can you tell a bit more about homework? Is homework relevant in this case? Or is this, or are they, are they, it's gonna be loaded with homework after all this work in the, during the day? Or is it all related to what they have already been doing earlier in the day?
Great question. So yeah, I, I would simply say the homework would fall under the asynchronous learning, right? Where the, the teacher has created the, the, the activities and the learning and then the students sort of do it. Because that's the time really where they're doing that independent work, which would usually fall under the umbrella of homework. So it wouldn't be any additional things to that. It would be the very direct assignments that, that tie the synchronous and asynchronous together. And just giving the students the space um throughout their day to balance that. So there wouldn't be additional homework on top of that. Um, sorry, what the, the other part of it was about, um, oh, communication and tools. So uh, for communication and feedback, I know our district's gonna look into uh Remind as a tool. To help with communication like texts and phone calls and things like that. Because we got that feedback, right? That our families want to hear more from our, our teachers. And so we're committed to do that. We're building in that time at the end of every day, right? Those office hours, families know you can always access your teacher at this time and set. Of course, they can reach them other times, but they might be in the middle teaching. But that is a set time where they can really check in with them every single day. Wednesday is also a time we're building in for teachers to try to have more one on one conferences and check ins. Um, especially if there are any students who are struggling to, to connect or, or to, to find success in distance learning. We're setting that up as Wednesdays is a re- is a day for teachers to really try to connect with those families. Um, and help them uh find out what's the disconnect or what's the gap? And how do we help uh support families and students in that? So I think those are some, some key strategies when it comes to tools. We like to use familiar tools. We used Seesaw last spring. It wasn't effective and we're using it again. Uh, Seesaw has improved. Our use of Seesaw has improved. All of our teachers are again going through more Seesaw professional development this week. On how to, to even better use it. And that will then again be the communication tool as well with our parents. And it's just, that's our, our, our easy way for our kids to know exactly where to go. And how to start uh their learning throughout the day. Because what we found from families is um, by the goodness of our own hearts. When we try to give families as many resources and places to go, hey, you can have your kid go here and do this or do this and this. The parents get lost and overwhelmed. So what we found is if we start them in that one place, which is Seesaw. And then we work out from there, that is a, a far more effective approach. Um, so keep the tools um less and simple. And then strategically use them to reach out to other resources that we're finding.
Thank you. Um, are they using Zoom as a platform for?
No, we, oh, sorry, we use Google meets. So right, uh, we're, so all of our hangouts and things will be Google Hangout meets. Um, the students will log in with their uh, their emails that they have generated from the school district. And so that will be their, uh, their way into those. And so students, the common expectation, and, and many of our students learned how to use that last year. But again, of course, we'll start all over this year with reteaching expectations and how to access that. And that will start with our families and students. So when I mentioned those virtual meet and greets. We're going to use the actual tool we're going to use with kids, which is the Google meets hangouts with our families for that conference. So the families can see, here's how it works. Here's how you operate it with the device you have at home. And here's how, um, how your student is gonna have those collaborative conversations and interactions with their peers and their teacher. So again, modeling to the families, how, uh, a core tool of communication.
Thank you. Um, with Director Steiger and then Better Storm.
Thank you, Chair Corman. Um, I have, my question is related to, um, it was brought up earlier about essential workers. So my question is related to our childcare for essential workers and how they will also be supporting this. Um, could someone else address that?
Director Steiger, Jake Winchell, Community Education Director here. Um, planning our childcare, we are prioritizing our tier one workers. Due to capacity and staffing issues, um, we don't know if we're gonna be able to um care for all tier one workers in the Bloomington School District. But we are working in um staffing. Our plan is to work in staffing that we can help assist and help facilitate distance learning while in childcare as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you Director or Principal Klein uh for taking all of these and uh handling them so well. My question comes to you as well as the other principal representatives about staffing in general. Are you up to, up to full capacity now or are you still waiting and hoping that it will be staffed fully?
In the distance model to, or distance learning two point O, we have the staff that we need to, to run it effectively and successfully.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we continue the next part of the presentation? We, I just have one more question, Mr. Klein.
I see.
Say that again?
I see two hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, you guys need to put your name in the, in the comment, in the chat so that I can see it. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to do this with twenty four first graders and see what happens.
I know. Well, you know, when you don't have a good connection or a bad day of connection like I'm having today. Then you end up having this issue with your students. Okay, so Director Bennett.
Uh, yeah, so um, I was wondering how much does this line up with uh Bloomington online or online school? Is it pretty much the same schedule or is that completely different? Is anyone gonna be presenting on, on that tonight?
I'll, I'll jump in and uh, I know John Weiser is, is actually helping out by presenting tonight. Uh, we did not have Bloomington Online School to present tonight. This was about distance learning and just looking through the schedule. I don't know if John Weiser uh wants to just jump in and, and say something or um, that's something that we'll cover for sure. At the, at the community engagement night on Thursday evening.
Hi, John Weiser, Director of Technology. Um, I'll say that um, the Bloomington Online Schedule has the same basic components. Essentially, uh, teaching online is teaching online. And so a combination of synchronous and asynchronous activities. Uh, a combination of hands on, or I mean, uh, uh, face to face and uh, uh, non-face to face activities. So balancing the types of learning uh flexibility in the hours. So you're gonna see on Thursday night a schedule, if you put them side by side, you'd see the same elements.
Okay, thank you.
Director BB.
Um, I have gotten questions from kindergarten parents who are concerned that their children actually. Will have a very difficult time since they can't um really even understand how to use a computer. How to interact. Um, I'm looking for maybe some answers for them, some encouragement for them. Because they're very concerned.
Yep, absolutely. And it, it's a legitimate concern. And I think if you asked every kindergarten teacher and as a former kindergarten teacher myself, I'd say a hundred percent. Right? It, that is a, the, the younger you go, the harder this becomes. Especially because one of the advantages we had last spring is we had them, right? We had them in school. We had relationships and, and everything to fall back on. And now we don't have that. So we're starting with having great relationships and trust and, and do all that um before we even get to know them. Especially our young little kindergartners, unless they were in our pre-K programs in Bloomington. This is our, our first kind of experience with them. And so that is a challenge. And so it's going to be uh, what we work really hard to do is what we call our first twenty days. And we do that in school and we've already worked hard. The Bloomington Online School has done a great job of creating that. And our buildings are all going to use that to have a twenty day kind of plan of, of success. To get our students um into distance learning and making sure it's going well. And so we always say as you, you go slow, um, go fast, right? And, and all that time you take on the front end to build the relationships, the trust, the connection. Um, and the access and, and the communication and troubleshooting. When you do all of that really well in the beginning, um, things will start to go smoother as you go. And that's just, that's just teaching one on one, right? But in distance learning, how to do that was we need to give them their tools, right? So first, um, their first step is coming to our schools on Wednesday and Monday um to, to come up to get their device. We're going to be giving them a whole bunch of, of kind of handouts and information about um their tools and how to use them and access them. And then that first point for our kindergarten teachers is that thirty minute conference where, where the kid's gonna have their device. They're in front of it with their parents and the teacher can walk them through and show them um the apps and the things. But this, it's a very valid point, right? That, that our youngest learners have the least exposure to distance learning and how to do this. And so that's the group we're gonna work the hardest with. Um, I'll speak just personally for myself. I know my building. We're gonna allocate some of those extra pair of supports to try to help our kindergarten students. Now, every building has different levels of, of uh ability to do that. But I know that all of my colleagues would say we are very aware that our, our incoming kindergarten students are the ones that are gonna need the most help. And we're gonna have to go even slower with them and, and take the time and, and get as many people in front of them to help connect. And I know as principals, I'll speak for our colleagues, we are more than happy to take any time any family needs to one on one walk through them and go, and go with uh, and support them. So very valid concern and it's a concern our kindergarten teachers are already working really hard to, to address.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see anyone else in the chat. Um, so I, could you a little more of the social emotional learning? Um, what would be the approach for this age?
Sure. I think I got that. It, it was a little bit choppy, but I think it was around social emotional learning and how to help elementary students with that. Is that, that right? Um, so what that looks like, like uh, I, I can simply say we have wonderful social workers and we do. We have amazing social workers and psychologists and special education staff, but that is, that is not enough. And so, right? So as an entire district, we've worked really hard to, to train our teachers on, on um, social emotional learning, right? And that's, that's our learning support side of our entire district. And we did that really hard when it, when we were in the brick and mortar building. Now to transition that to school, um, that is absolutely the check and connects with the families, right? Having those conversations and setting aside time. Um, the amount of parents I've talked to this summer who have said. Um, we're just really worried about my, my child's wellbeing and making sure that they have social outlets and connections. And so we have to work hard to communicate with parents to say, do you know what your act, what your um options are? To accessing supports for your child outside of school. And so I know every team at the district level in the buildings um has that information. And that's part of our process to share out with families, right? When our parents drive through, they know what resources and supports are available to their child. Not just for our food distribution in the district or childcare, but for the mental health and the social emotional. Um, on a daily basis, morning meeting is that key check in point for all kids. Again, the small groups really help with social emotional learning. That is not just about academics in that small group time with kids. That is a lot of time to connect with the child personally and, and ask them how they're doing. And just engage them in conversation and let them talk. But also, as a person who's talking a lot right now as an adult, let the kids talk to each other, right? And again, when they're with four to five other kids, you can give. And again, when they're with four to five other kids, you can give them that space to facilitate conversation. That will help tremendously with a sense of connection, um, and belonging because they have access to other peers when many of our children we know right now don't have that. So that is the best way we can do it in those small groups of synchronous learning, um, is to give them that platform to do it. Yet to have us, an adult who can help facilitate healthy interactions.
Thank you. Well, I think we can continue with the presentation.
Thank you Chair Corman. Brian Ingeman from Oak Grove Middle School to talk to us about the middle school schedule. Mr. Ingeman?
Yeah, hello Brian Ingeman. Thank you Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki and School Board and hello viewing audience. So I'm here to share the middle school schedule and I'd like to just give credit to Principal Klein because he shared a lot of things that you'll find similar in thinking in philosophy and strategy at the middle and high school. And as I was listening to the questions, I'm going to try to make sure I weave in some answers to things I've kind of heard there. Maybe might be common themes that will transfer levels, um, as I go through this. So, uh, the middle school schedule represents, uh, all three schools here. And this is the schedule we're going to follow. So as you notice here, um, it's, it's detailed here in different colors on explain this. So what we learned from this distance started 1.0 is, uh, Director Kuba shared is that we learned that we, we did it well, but we're going to do it a lot better here. And what I heard from parents last spring is they heard a combination that, boy, I wish there was more structure. There was too much structure. It was too much work, not enough work. So what we put in place now is, is, is a schedule where students will need to be up and at them and start doing the work. And they're going to have flexibility to be connected with teachers or other students or work independently, then come back together. And they'll be following their, their schedule. So what you see here represents, we will put grade A, B, and C across the top. It just represents the different grades could be six, seventh and eighth. And we also represent exploratory teachers. That's the schedule because students will see all their classes in this schedule. So, uh, what students will have daily, daily, they'll have their main four core classes. Math, science, social studies and language arts. So when you see core on the schedule, please know that core 1, 2, 3, 4 represents math, science, language arts, social studies. Okay? Exploratories, um, this is what we shared back a while ago and right size in the butt. It seems like a distant memory, but these are those exploratory classes they'll see. And they will look at an A-day, B-day schedule. And students will see those courses either Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday. And those courses are your music, FIAD, health, art, facts, technology, education. Okay? So for understanding key terms, core classes for us is that core team we keep together in those main core classes. They will see, uh, every day. And when I say every day, I make sure I'm clear on this, that this is four days a week. Because Wednesday we'll run a office hour day, but the, the core learning will take place four days a week. Monday, Tuesday, uh, Thursday, Friday, and Wednesday will be the office hour. So as we go through the schedules, kind of work our way down, just a grade eight. Grade A is the schedule on the top. Collaboration is teacher time to collaborate, get the day ready. Organized, uh, for them to work and, and make sure that we're providing high-quality experience for our students that's engaging and learning. Advisory time, all students will be up and at them, 8:15 in their advisory class. Every student's in, scheduled in an advisory class. They will log into the hub, which will record their attendance and also be a place that is fed their information about their schedule, what's happening. And I know I heard people ask, well, what are the technology tools used in the middle school? We use Google Classroom in Canvas, much like the high school, and that feeds the hub. And hub is common language that we use in Bloomington schools, you know that. So students will stare in the hub, they'll record their attendance and also they'll get information regarding, uh, their schedule, work assignments, things like that. Then when you see a blue box, that's exploratories. And exploratories are those courses I just mentioned. Your music, FIAD, tech ed, art, facts, so on, health. They'll have those either, uh, in the scheduled time based on the schedule they receive. And they'll follow that schedule either 1A or 2A along the way. And that, this, this will be laid out in the student's schedule when they receive this information. Then they'll go to a core class. You see core one, you see core two, uh, you see office hours listed. That's for teachers to be able for students to come back to check in for office hours with students. We have lunch built in, um, more office hours, core three and four, and we end the day in office hours. So when you get to the middle school level, and I think it'll be similar to high school, you're going to see a combination of synchronous and asynchronous. So I kind of heard in, in the elementary schedule, they said, well, where's, does this admit there's a lot of instruction? So you might look at this and say, wow, there's maybe too much instruction. But please know, students are going to be following their entire schedule. And it's going to be a combination where they may start in synchronous learning where it's going to be a, a teacher leading off, whole group and advisor maybe talking SEL and students checking in, checking each other, developing a buddy system, a variety of things that teachers may be doing, um, to connect with kids, maybe their advisory class. When they get to a math class, it might be a full group instruction to kind of overview the goals and contents for the course. But then it could lead into small breakout groups or students working, uh, in small groups, uh, within student groups where the teacher checks in. Or it could be them working remotely and checking back in with students or working asynchronously. And the teachers online to do the synchronously checking as needed. So we see a combination of, uh, this being successful because we're going to have structured synchronous and asynchronous times along the way. And I, I really feel confident this will go well. And I want to give, uh, credit to, uh, the elementary principals where I heard their schedule because just watching, uh, our summer school program work this summer, Dr. Molly Coyne and I led the summer school program, which was all online. It was synchronous and we had students that, you know, are coming from kindergarten. And so we had students going to first grade, second grade, third, fourth, fifth and sixth. And it was, it was a synchronous program where they're online at nine, 10, 11 and 12. And they really did a good job of being aligned and connecting the teachers. And it's because our teachers are really planning for this and really doing a lot of great collaboration. And they're our biggest asset and they're going to make this really go well. And I'm confident at all levels you'll see that happen. Cause I experienced it in summer school in four weeks with a group of teachers that I, I didn't collectively know. I knew some from previous summer schools, but, uh, people will come together and make this work. Cause we're doing a lot of planning, uh, right now to roll this out because over the summer, there's been planning around this. So what you see at the middle school schedule across all three schools will be this. So it'll be a combination where it's synchronous and asynchronous. It's very structured for students to follow along. And you can see they're going to be up, starting advisory, connecting with their teacher, their peers, making some buddy system together as a group, checking on each other along the way. Then as, as a staff, we'll be looking for students to be, to be checking in along the way, make sure they're doing work. And we mentioned this, I mentioned the schedule that Wednesday is the office hour schedule. So Wednesday will be the day where teachers can coordinate schedule times for small groups, individual groups. Just be open for hours to answer questions that come out along the way. Students will know that so they can use that time to get caught up. So we're going to kind of use that Wednesday as that time, two days of that direct busy schedule. Wednesday, stop, work on projects, work on assignments, check with student groups, check with my teacher as needed, get extra support, uh, use your resources. As part of that is make sure we have our students know how to use their resources at school. And that's our staff and, uh, other students as needed. And then Thursday, Friday, get back into instruction. But we feel this schedule represents, um, a really good way to engage our students. And also if we get to that point and there's, and we're able to successfully re-engage in a face-to-face model and, and come back to maybe a, a hybrid model, this kind of lines up to kind of a hybrid structure we have in place. So for us, it's an easy transition if the flip, if we can flip the switch. Hopefully later in October, in cases allow us to bring students back in a healthy environment and staff as well. We're, we feel we're positioned well to make that transition, uh, in this schedule represents that. So it's one reason we went to this, that this was developed across all middle schools. So I've talked a lot here. I want to stop, open up for questions and, uh, see if I can help guide more discussion along the way.
Thank you Principal Ingeman. Okay, so it seems like my internet service has been restored. So please let me know if it's still not working and then I will turn off my camera as it was recommended by Mr. Ringel. Okay, any questions?
Director Saram. Thank you, Brian. You've really, uh, you really know how to explain this very well. The only concern I have is the lunch period now. And maybe somebody else, Andy can answer this or something else like that. Because we're going online, we don't have transportation issues or concerns. Are we still doing the grab and go lunch at the, at the various schools? So that families can go out and get the lunches for the kids?
Uh, I'd maybe default to. And I would say Director Zifkovich would have the details around that, but I know the plan is to still offer, uh, lunch through the distance learning.
Director Saram, this Rod Zifkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. Yes, there'll be five locations within the district, uh, that will be serving grab and go meals. There'll be Kennedy High School, Valley View Middle School, Norman Dale Hills Elementary, Washburn Elementary and Jefferson High School. And more details to come out on it, uh, but it'll be more of a, uh, walk-up service versus the drive-up service that you saw, uh, this last year.
Good, thank you. And then in terms of any transportation, it's all going to be relied. If, if the schools are open and somebody wants to come to school for some extra help or something like that, it's, it's probably personal transportation, but will buses, should we, uh, go to, uh, hybrid and all of a sudden have to change where we will need transportation? Bus drivers and everybody else that's involved with that are, uh, are on call?
Director Saram and Rod Zifkovich again. Yes, uh, we have a process in place. We've been working with the principals for the different options regarding, uh, hybrid or traditional. Once, uh, we talk about that at the end of September, if we have to move in that direction, we'll work with the principals to be able to come up with those options.
Thank you. Other questions? And, um, the only people I cannot see my layout is Director Bibi and Director Steiger and Director Bennett. So if any of you three have a question, please go ahead and turn your microphone on and ask your question.
Director Bibi here. Uh, I just want to say I'm very pleased with what I see. And, um, I'm thankful to see the explorations in there and the structure. And I really am hoping that this will work well. So thank you for all of your work.
Well, I just, uh, it's the middle school team I work with. We have a great group of middle school principals and we used, uh, some great thinking by the, the excellent teaching staff we have. So we feel, we feel confident in the model we've put in place. And again, the flexibility to switch to the hybrid model, um, if that allows for us to safely do that. So, um, you know, part of this, please know is that we will be spending, um, a good portion of that first week of school, training students how to follow the schedule. It's going to be critical that students are engaged in their technologies. Parents can know that the schedule is in place, know that students, they should be up and at them. They should be doing something by 8:15 every day. They should be connecting with their stu, their, their friends. They should be connecting with their teacher and be following a list of things to do. So, and you know, we got to make sure that this is a right balance for all the students. Cause we got to make sure that students are engaged to all levels and of skill and make sure we're meeting the needs of all the kids. So we know that we have a lot of things in place that might look overwhelming, but our job is to make sure we instruct and guide our students to be able to understand the schedule that we're putting together. We know they won't have this perfectly mastered by the end of the first week. And that as we build their capacity and we'll be able to build, uh, deeper engagement with their learning along the way.
If I could, Chair Corman, just jump in and provide some commentary to, to Principal Ingeman's comments. What he said is, is spot on. So the schedules that you've seen so far, and you'll see one more, uh, are in place because we, you know, we still have it as our goal that we will move to a hybrid model. And these schedules that you're seeing in front of you give the best transition for that. We've put a lot of work, uh, into that hybrid model, making sure that it fits. And so as we look at the data around us, uh, I was looking at the AMSD data today. And so it's changed considerably on my count today, and it's not scientific, it's just me going through counting. I saw 17 school districts have moved to distance learning. Uh, and so school districts, uh, you know, and I'm trying to stay on the right side of the quorum here. And, uh, because it's none of our business necessarily, but we want to monitor who's doing things successfully. And we're able to look and see other school districts who are in hybrid. And I will say, um, that hybrid is interpretive. If we were to take traditional learning and we were to take, uh, distance learning and if hybrids in the middle, um, school districts are calling things hybrid, which are more towards distance learning than they are hybrid. And so that aside, we want to monitor to see what other school districts are doing. And if we can learn from those school districts and move into hybrid, if our data is showing that we can and that we can do it safely, we want to get there. And I've shared this before, I'm a Bloomington resident with two kids in the Bloomington Public Schools. Like everyone else, I want my kids in school, uh, but we want to make sure that we do it safely. And we're going to be watching. And so all I wish to say, the schedules that you see tonight, position us, if we make a shift into hybrid after studying it, that we'll be positioned to do so with, with you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Director Bennett, Director Steiger? No? Okay, so, um, as we talk about academics and how important it is to have it all organized so that we can deliver, uh, high-quality education for our students, um, the social aspect is also very important, the social emotional aspect. Considering that our students went through, uh, or have been going through this whole COVID-19 situation plus social unrest. So I would like to ask you the same question that I ask the elementary principals is, uh, the social emotional learning, how are you, uh, planning on incorporating this? Is this going to be on a daily basis? What is your approach?
Absolutely. That's a very good question, Chair Corman. So our advisory, every day we're going to start an advisory and that's where that, this will happen. Students will see the same teacher every day in their advisory, same group of students. And this is where we'll embed different SEL activities, their relationship building with their teacher, relationship building with their, their friends. And we all know this. As you get to middle school, students become really expand the use of their devices, their social media. And I'm not saying every student has a phone, but most students are connected in some form of technology. And they're using a variety of social media tools and they stay connected in many different ways. And as parents, parents of three children myself, sometimes I want to make sure they use those tools the right way to make positive connections. There's a lot of neat things out there. So students are very skilled at staying connected and using different ways of connecting, using social media. We need to refocus our vision now to say, hey, now you're at Google meets. How do we do that properly? How do you do, get Google hang of, uh, other friends? How do we work together and show etiquette in a, a Google hangout? Mute your microphone, raise your hand. And our teachers will help lead and guide those meetings. But also at the secondary level, we have access to counselors and social workers and that'll be working with students that are on their caseloads too. And then we ask also identify, uh, through student need and your parent request to support them as well along the way. But we have that built-in advisory time that will build more capacity, uh, with our students around that. What's, what's the new normal look like? Cause we know this, students are out and about, out there in public and gathering different areas in, in small groups, whether it's with their neighborhood or their playground or different sports teams along the way. So we'll bring that here together in this digital world where their chance to kind of get together and, and reconnect in those relationships, using the Google meets and the hangouts. And it starts with the core instruction our teachers provide about how to use the tools in a proper way. And promote that collaboration when they work together that this is your study buddy group, maybe checking each other every day. Or you do some problem, uh, activities together as a group. Cause as adults, please know that it's workshop. We, we already started our teachers engaging different group activities because we're working with teachers remotely. And we're modeling those activities for teachers and they pick those up and run it right away. And during this time, this, this week and next week, they'll be doing more of that. Prepare themselves to help guide, uh, opportunities for social emotional learning in those classrooms and especially in that advisory time. I hope that hands, it gives you a good idea what we see that at the middle school level like.
Thank you Principal Ingeman. And I don't know if, um, Dr. Mitchler could speak a little bit more on that and how this would relate to our safe and supportive schools from plan?
Yeah, I'd be happy to Chair Corman. And, uh, I, you know, I, as I hear both, uh, Principal Klein and Principal Ingeman talk about the way they plan to incorporate social emotional learning into the advisory time, for example, or the morning meetings. You know, I'm thinking about the strategies that they would use during their, those times are, are likely strategies they would use during those small group synchronous times as well. And so I think it's something that, uh, would be embedded throughout the day. So of course specific times for that social emotional work and connecting with students, building relationships, right? We know how important. for that social emotional work and connecting with students, building relationships, right? We know how important to all of that is. But also making sure that that's a part of the other, the other work that's happening too. So the small groups, the synchronous learning. And then giving students a scaffold and a framework for doing that work when they're maybe doing work without a teacher present, for example, and with with some of their other student, maybe colleagues, right? So we'll find ways to do some of that work in an embedded way. And then I'll also just add, you know, Principal Ingham had talked about modeling. We've been doing a lot of modeling even with the leadership over the last couple of weeks around different strategies and activities you could do using a Google hangout or Google meet, for example. One of them, I'll just give it as an example to everyone in our viewing viewing audience here is around norms. And so setting norms for being in a space like this and talking about how norms can be the foundation of our work that allow everyone in the space an opportunity to be heard and to feel justified in their responses. And so something as basic as that and creating a activity can be really helpful and a great way to bolster some relationship building and social emotional learning too.
Yeah, definitely. That support will be very, very important, especially considering the fact that the kids won't be able at the beginning of the year to be together. It really makes a huge impact in their learning and their emotions, of course. Hey, thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, we can continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Corman. Dr. Jason Anderson from Jefferson High School to go over the high school schedule. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Executive Director Kubus, Madam Chair, members of the school board, public watching at home. I do feel like I have the most straightforward presentation this morning in terms that my two colleagues did do a very excellent job in explaining both the physical design of their schedules and some of the rationale and how they 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 sought balance. And so the high school set, the high school schedule, while of course different, is definitely built in a very similar vein. I was listening to questions and took some notes. And so I will try, like Principal Ingham did, to to proactively address what are some common themes as far as questions go. This schedule, just so you, just so you can kind of wrap your brain around it, similar to Principal Klein, is the teacher facing schedule. This is not necessarily the student facing schedule. When we release the student facing schedule to parents and students, we'll add a little more student friendly and parent friendly terms just so they can wrap their brain around. So this is the teacher facing schedule. And I will say that one of the things, I was on the hybrid design team over the summer as well with secondary folks. And several weeks ago, in fact, we started building bell schedules for both a hybrid learning model and a distance learning model. And the need, like Principal Ingham said, to be able to transition smoothly. Interesting thing to note at high school, we often talk about the complexity of the schedules. So when we're looking at major schedule changes and major changes to to the student's schedule, a quick math will tell you that we have about seventeen hundred students. Seventeen hundred students take eighteen courses in a year. That equals to thirty thousand six hundred individual registrations at the high school level. So anytime you make a schedule change, that impacts that number of individual data points. So it was crucial for us to have a schedule built on consistency and transition ability, if that's word. So the schedule you see before you does have a similar balance that the middle school and high school brought out with asynchronous and synchronous times with the times allotted for both synchronous meets as well as for optional time for teachers and students to to interact. There's built-in time for teacher communication, which we know is critical, so they can reach out individually to students and parents and vice versa on a one-on-one or small group basis. So the very simple way to look at this schedule is that it is it is sort of similar in block schedule format where on Mondays and Thursdays and then Tuesdays and Fridays, they will have the same class meet as a synchronous meeting. Now, as of now, we are, we are requiring that teachers have one synchronous meet per week with the second one reserved for an optional synchronous meet. That is how we are starting the year. We have a lot of flexibility that we know we need to work with our students and our teachers. I'll speak a little bit more about that flexibility in just a moment, but continuing on the schedule. So as of now, your average student will have three meets per day at a minimum with many opportunities and options for additional meets during that morning and afternoon slot as well as Wednesday slots. All the slots in yellow are set aside time for those supplementary mates, those small group tutoring, those office hours, those additional contact times for the student and for the teacher. As the student walks through their day, there is time built in. We even wanted to highlight the non-synchronous times because one of the things, one of the lessons we learned last year was with the schedule that we created and the sort of the how students should commit their times. There are many students struggled with, you know, well, today I'm only working on these classes, but tomorrow I'll work on those classes that we want our students and families to know that you're responsible to all six classes every day. Just the schedule and the staggered approach is is important thing. So we want, and again, similar to what Principal Ingham mentioned, we are going to really be coherent and of teaching our students and our parents of what it means to set a schedule, set routines, set deadlines and that sort of thing. So we feel that this schedule, which we have vetted through multiple different groups of teachers and administrators, does provide both stability, consistency, but also flexibility to to work at the high school level. Some other things that I know were important included social emotional learning. I heard it at the last end. We, we, our teachers know how critical it is is to build community, to build a sense of connection and humanity in our classrooms. It is such a powerful aspect of the academic learning. And we know that that needs to transfer as best as possible to this scenario as well. So similar to what other principals mentioned, we have begun our workshop, our work with teachers this week. And we modeled several different examples of how you, how teachers can do small group. And you can do small group breakout sessions that focus not just on content, but also community and relationship building. We did an example of that today. We ran a hundred and twenty adults through a small group, social emotional learning, support circles, exercise this this afternoon. And every teacher said they they really enjoyed it. And many said they're going to figure out how to implement those things in their classroom. So our teachers are really focused not just on academic delivery, academic content delivery, but how to build community, how to sustain community, which we know is so important at all levels, at all ages. The other question that often got asked, and I, and I know many of you mentioned that you've received calls from parents about what's a what's a fair balance in in synchronous time? And we know that there's families who who do want more. One of the, one of the, so two things. One is that we we feel and believe that that three meetings in synchronous fashion is a is a really healthy balance for for high school kids. Knowing that they, not only do they have those three meetings, they also have three other classes that they are responsible for work to do every, any given day and what other obligations they may have. The second thing that often got asked is, is for at a high school level, knowing that we have many students who will not be able to make these meets either on a regular basis or here in there. High school kids, if you you had them, you've known them, if you you were one yourself someday. We have a lot of high school students who are essentially living the lives of adults right now. We have a lot of high school students that are working, that are helping support the income of their household. We have many high school students that are on their own. We have many high school students with a variety of adult level challenges. And so what we needed to create with this schedule is synchronicity, consistency, but also a schedule that provides that student flexibility and a system that doesn't penalize them for having to attend to those other obligations. So all the synchronous meets that the teacher does have will be will be supplemented to the students that couldn't make it. In addition to that, while we will be reporting attendance, similar to how Principal Ingham said, our teachers will be tracking who doesn't show and we'll be communicating with our support teams to be able to identify if there's some common patterns for why students are unable to make synchronous meets. For certainly for some kids who missed their synchronous meets, they just slept in and didn't didn't go to bed early enough on time. But we know there will be other students who have other real-world challenges that our support teams can then swoop in and help support that kid. So those are other reasons in the way we built the schedule, the way we did. We certainly know there, there, there are, there are a belief, a feeling that that more than, even more than this would be would be adequate. And I can respect that. But but building that we we try to build into, we try to build this schedule based on all of those factors. And then the last thing I will say is that you know, the the three periods per day and the Wednesday, based on some flexibility, that this is a significant ramp up from last year in both structure and in quantity of synchronous synchronicity. And so again, the thing that I've been telling parents and students is that I can assure them that they will, they will feel a significant difference from last spring for their student's schedule. So I tried to summarize our schedule and a lot of questions got asked and a lot of clarifications went from Principal, Principal Klein and Ingham. So maybe it'll be a little bit more understandable, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions at this time.
Chair Corman, if I could just again, give a little bit of commentary and credit that hybrid work group who's now partnered with distance learning. But they studied asynchronous versus synchronous learning very heavily. In fact, they had, they have a ten-page document that talks about synchronous versus asynchronous, including research that came from different states, the Rutledge Group, who studies bring research about how long is enough for kids to be in front of a computer. And so I just don't ever want anybody to walk away thinking that it was an arbitrary decision. It was a lot of meeting time and a lot of research that it went in to how much is the right amount of time. I think moreover, I mean, as we walk into classrooms now, so my latest principal gig was an elementary gig. And I think what you see in, in different than when I was in elementary school, where we sat in rows and we just listened to the teacher tell us what we should learn. What you see now is exactly what we're trying to replicate, especially in that elementary schedule, which is Principal Klein talked about it. Small group time with a bunch of students while other kids are doing different things than rotating to another group. And so the teacher really isn't ever in front of that whole group for very long, for all the reasons that we can imagine. But instead gives the concise directions and then moves amongst groups to make sure that they're on track and they're getting the questions answered. So all I wish to say, there was a lot of time and energy and research that went into this balance of synchronous synchronous versus asynchronous. I just wanted everyone to understand the detail of work that went into that. And again, it wasn't just an arbitrary, here's, here's what we think. Credit the group for putting all that time into research into that. Thank you.
Yeah, just to kind of add on to that, not to go too deep here. Teachers and partnering with 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 teachers across the whole secondary system as well as district professionals are really diving deep in what do those synchronous times look like at the high school and at the middle school level. It is unlikely that it will be teacher talking directly. It'll be really focused on group collaboration, problem solving, being really, really creative. And that's the, that's the takeaway that we're going to have from this experience is that we're going to get smarter and sharper and better in delivering instruction within a digital world, which we know we live in a digital world anyway. So that will be a silver lining to this experience for sure.
For sure. Thank you for adding and clarifying that. Director Sorm?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Jason Anderson. So my questions again are staffing and meeting the needs of the students, having a coming up senior. And a lot of the mail that we received, emails and phone calls said, how come you took so much time and voted for hybrid and then two weeks later you threw that out and now you're going to distance learning? And as I tried to explain to him, I said, all the lessons and everything else that was done for hybrid are going to be used. Some of them are going to be used for distance learning, but should distance learning not be completed? And we go back to hybrid. We already have the work done and we'll be able to go right into the hybrid model whenever we need it. So having, having said that, the, that might, if they're still listening, hopefully satisfy some of the questions that we didn't just throw out hybrid that we're going to distance learning. But staffing wise, and then how a lot of them said, well, I'm just going to have my kids go over to Normandale, take all the courses over at Normandale. So that whole PSCO approach that might still be available, how does that fit in?
Sure. So a couple of questions that were kind of connected to to that. So I'll go and I'll try to go in order. So as far as staffing goes, with this model, we are in good shape. We are actually in very healthy shape to deliver high content or high content, high quality content with highly qualified professionals. And that was one of our our major concerns in the previous design. So it's staffing, we are in a good shape. As far as the work of the hybrid group, I agree, like even though we're not necessarily implementing a specific, that specific model, a ton of the work transfers over to a distance learning world. And two, we are still working under the, under the, under the belief that we will transition back to a hybrid model at some point in time, hopefully sooner than later. So that work, while maybe put on a shelf, will be right there to grab as soon as we need it. And so we are confident that that work did not go to waste and will be absolutely used at some point, hopefully near in the future. And then PSCO, PSCO, you know, is the very common option, especially at Jefferson, since we're so close to Normandale. Normandale is doing all online as well this fall. And so as far as how it impacts staffing, Executive Director Zivkovich could weigh in on that. But you know, it will, it will not impact our staffing in the short term, but it could have an impact in the, in the medium term when they start to look at how many students do we did move over to Norman now. But that's, that's kind of a reality every year.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Director Corman, can I again, just jump in and provide a little bit of background for for Director Sorm? I'm sorry, Chair Corman. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, Director Sorm, we are still going to keep our hybrid group together. So keeping that group of the planning group, the planning group of hybrid and distance learning is still going to operate, albeit a smaller version. But again, as I mentioned, we want to study what other school districts are doing and learn from them. And we want to continue to look at what we're doing. And then, you know, everyone's hope is that we do move into at least a less restrictive environment, in this case, hybrid, that will learn our lessons and be able to implement. And so all that, all of that work has not gone to waste. So thank you for bringing that up.
Director Starks?
So this is a comment more than a question for Principal Anderson, but I really appreciate your putting your decision-making into context. So when you mentioned the thirty thousand registrations, that was a big aha moment for me because I think sometimes it's easy for myself as a parent to see a schedule and think, well, what about this? And what about that? And that doesn't work for my student. But when you put it into the context of thirty thousand registrations, okay, got it. I understand why we're here, right? So so I really appreciate that. And then also acknowledging the adult obligations, which is a phrase I hadn't heard yet. And I really appreciate that context as well and recognizing that our high school students have different challenges than our elementary and middle school students have. So I just wanted to thank you for both of those because for me tonight, those were both two very aha moments for me. And I appreciate you bringing them forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bibi?
I too really appreciate all the work that I see that's been done. And especially the opportunities for students and teachers to to collaborate. So thank you very much. That piece is so big. The other question I have is about the career and college academy and wondering if there is staffing for those classes that may be happening in one of these hours and, and if that is still going to function.
So that I will say is a different program that I do not oversee. A lot of career and college academy teachers, I don't know that I want to speak out of turn. I don't, I don't believe they're I don't know. I'll say I believe they are staffed, not Bloomington. They're not, I don't believe they're Bloomington Public School in a teacher group. I believe they're a different group. So I don't want to be too much to their staffing. I will say, now getting back to what I do know is that building the schedule, both this and the hybrid schedule, we have several, again, just for context of how complex the the high school schedule is. We have students every hour leaving for different, different things and then coming back from those different things. BCCA is a good example of it, but we also, you know, students go to HTC, HTCT, H, Tenepin Technical College and other programs. And so being able to make sure that, knowing that our schedule impacts so many other things was really, really important for us. So we worked with Gary Cresson, the BCCA director in both this schedule and the distance. We do have a distance, no, we do have a hybrid bell schedule ready to go if and when we need it. So we made sure that both of those schedules would align with his needs as well. So those students could still have those opportunities.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you to all of our principals, the ones that have been present here today in presenting. Okay, thank you to all of our principals, the ones that have been present here today in presenting. And those who are not with us tonight, but who have put in a lot of work over the last the last weeks. I know those have been very intense weeks and you have been working all day and big part of the night too. I can assume that. So big thank you to all of you and all the people who are part of your teams, including teachers and counselors, because I know there is another layer of people that have been involved in those in developing this as well. So thank you for doing that. Let's continue with our presentation. I know there's more.
Thanks, Chair Corman. So two questions that we had heard percolating in the past were what about, you know, different types of students? And so Jennifer McIntyre is here to talk to you about what how special education students are part of this schedule. And then I will finish up with what a schedule might look like for our EL learners. Because I know, like I said, those were questions that had come up. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer McIntyre, Executive Director of Special Education.
Thank you, Andy Kubis. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you, Board Chairman Corman. Sorry. I gotta get my feet underneath me for a second. I've been listening to such a great presentation from all three of our principals that I have to now get my words right. So thank you, Chair Corman, Directors of the School Board and Superintendent Fujitaki for this opportunity to speak a little bit more about special education and how our teams have been developing and will quite frankly, continue to develop as our teachers and our staff have been coming back today and really working diligently throughout the day and throughout the next couple of weeks as we are really bringing this picture together. The three schedules that you just that you just were walked through from elementary, middle school and high school are the three schedules that what we will do within special education is we will work with those schedules to look at the synchronous time, the asynchronous time, and then build in the time specifically for special education. And so we, as you know, we work with a range of needs from our students or services that we need to provide. And so we'll work with those three schedules and then we will take the needs of students from a small amount of services that are needed. So perhaps it's direct services through speech language pathologists or direct services for a little bit of time, which will be incorporated into a synchronous time that you saw through elementary, middle school or high school, all the way to for some of our students who receive a large portion of their day within special education. So as we're building out those schedules, our special education teachers will work hand in hand with our general education teachers to build out those schedules and to provide those services. We will look for opportunities to provide those synchronous approaches to learning. And then we also look for how do we assist students to build it out after that in providing them with assignments or ways to apply the skills that we're working on to deepen that learning and to broaden that out oftentimes into the community is how we're hoping that they will apply those skills. We will be working on direct goals and objectives when we're doing our services through special education. One of the lessons that we learned from last spring for sure, that we've brought forward moving into the fall is that we're doing quite a bit of work to assist to differentiate what was being presented through our general education classrooms. And what we wanted to get back to is, okay, so we have our students attending in our general education classrooms. How do we really focus in and target it on those goals and objectives specific for each of the students as identified? And provide those direct instructions through that synchronous approach? That will be a difference that people that are families and our students will see coming into this fall. It's a very direct and targeted approach to those goals and objectives as they are built into their overall schedule, as you saw from elementary, middle school and high school principals. We also will be working very closely with our related service providers, so our speech language pathologists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, assistive technology, our DAP teachers, our developmental adaptive physical education teachers. We'll also be looking at those schedules to say, how do we build that time in those synchronized times? And those asynchronous times. So Principal Klein did an incredible job answering a lot of detailed questions about his schedule. And as I was listening to him answer those questions and giving those answers, what I was thinking is I wanted to jump in to say, when we get into further mapping this out for students, there are other synchronized times that are given to students, particularly that have needs within special education. I know next director, Kubis will talk about our English language program. And so there are other components that are fit into those schedules. And I like to think of it as a master puzzle and how are we going to fit all of those pieces together to make sure all of our students' needs are being met. Now I say that, and I also know many of you have taken phone calls and I've also taken phone calls to discuss that this distance learning does not always work or isn't working for all of our students within special education. And that is true. And so those are some of the areas in which we are working very closely with our case managers and our families to say, how can we provide the services in a manner while also working through this time of distance learning that is meaningful for our students and our families? One of the areas that we've worked closely with, and you'll see in this area, is our therapeutic services that we partner with Headway Mental Health Services as well as our services through our social workers and our school psychologists and school counselors. There we're really working closely with them to say, how are they doing those initial check and connects with families? To make sure we're doing some check-ins, just to see where families are at orchestrating that in the course of the next two weeks to see how are we bringing those that those components together to just do some check-ins with families to see where they're at? And then being able to build out from there. John, I can have you go to the next slide. I can speak a little bit more about two things here is as we're increasing the amount of services for some of our students. So some of our students have a little bit of service that they receive throughout the course of the day. Some of our students are receiving a larger amount of services through special education. Taking the schedules which you just saw and taking those and mirroring those directly for the students so that they have synchronized and asynchronous times in which we're building out services for those students. That would be done by our case managers who have the majority of a day that they're providing services for some of our students. There we also would be building in our speech language pathology, our occupational therapy, physical therapy, and really looking at the course of the first couple of weeks when we talk about distance learning plus supports. There we're looking at, is there a time when we need to have a very targeted, limited appointment, time to meet with a student to look at what are their specific needs? In a face-to-face manner, can we do that in a way that is following all of the health guidelines? And that really is meaningful for both that student and for what we need to do that. Our beginning thoughts are how would we do that for a student who receives perhaps physical therapy services? And we're needing to measure them for a gate trainer or a student who receives some form of assistive technology, perhaps a communication device, and we need to be working face to face with them to work through. How do we make sure that accommodation is working? So those are the types of areas we would start with first. We've also done some considerations as we're building out these models for students who are receiving both academic and mental health services at school. And how do we partner those up with synchronized instruction remotely and maybe through virtual means? And then also doing some face-to-face with a student and bringing those two pieces together. Now that's work. I know in the course of the next couple of weeks, we will start to work very closely with our case managers and our teams to figure out how will that fit together with the schedules in which you've seen, which you have seen already by the three principals. There's a lot to cover and a lot of pieces to kind of put together for all of our case managers. But we in fact will will be doing that and then meeting, of course, during our check-in connects in the course of the next couple of weeks with our families. We will be holding on to a couple of unique programs as we start the school year that are designed specifically in our community. We have programs that are projects or programs, programs that are in our community that our job coaches are supporting students who have positions like at a couple of our local companies within Bloomington. We'll continue to support those students in those environments because we're not able to replicate that environment in another way. And so we're looking at, so say a student is working or has a job at a fresh time, we would have our folks supporting that student while they're in that environment. Of course, following all of the health guidelines that we can, but it's the uniqueness of those programs that we need to hold on to because we're not able to quite replicate them in a school or in an academic setting. So there's a couple of programs that we will hold on to in a way to really provide that rich opportunity for those students in a face-to-face manner. But there's really few of those students and they are on our career technical end of services in which we provide. So with that, I will take any questions within special education. We're the happy to answer any of those questions that I know we'll be answering some at the community event on Thursday as well. So.
Questions? Okay, doesn't look like there's any question. Oh, Director Olson. Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, Jennifer. I was just wondering, so I attended, one of your parents had a Zoom meeting through familyvoicesofminnesota.org and I attended that. And it was a great resource for, let's see, families of children facing unique challenges during COVID-19, medical, physical, developmental, behavioral or emotional. For, you know, these things affect can be very, they can affect families and be very isolating to them, especially with distance learning, as you know. So I'm wondering, do we have a way to share this? This great organization for families to reach out to to familyvoicesofminnesota.org? Or I guess I'm sharing it right now.
I was gonna say, Director Olson, you are, you're sharing it now. And I'm glad that you went to that. That was a terrific opportunity. And I, my understanding is they have those coffee greet and meets virtual quite frequently and open that up to the community. And we do have the, they have a an event that's coming up and that's a virtual event that's coming up that we most certainly can get sent out. Executive Director Coffin and I have been talking about that, about how to get additional communications out to all of our family and the best means to do that. So I think that working with Family Voices is such a wonderful organization and we have some really great advocates in our in our district that have students in our district to really bring that to us. So thank you for attending that and thank you for sharing that resource.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Director Bibi.
Yes, I had someone approach me this weekend who has a child in the Pond or preschool and had questions about that. It may have been answered. But with those children, are there that are special ed students? Is there going to be maybe be more virtual with them because of the nature of their needs or is that just determined case by case? They're just concerned about there being too much screen time in trying to connect because it hasn't worked well in other settings of therapies that they've needed.
Yes. Thank you for the question. With our Pond Center, of course, we're talking about our youngest learners or littlest learners, right? And there we will be working with our Early Learning Academy or Early Learning Services to provide those services and look at when they offer the preschool instruction that would be done virtually and then really seeing how does that work for students to also have a direct goals and objectives component after that? Or does it make sense to combine it and maybe do that in a, if they have class in the morning and they do that in the afternoon? Depending on, obviously, they were talking about some nap times, they were talking about some other components that are in a three and a four-year-old's life. But working with that family to see what is the best time to structure that? And I also know that our team monitors, especially that we're including more and more of a virtual presence in presenting that we didn't have last spring. Really monitoring students' ability, A, to stay with it or to stay with the instruction while they're online, but then also being able to tailor that. Should we shorten it? Should we lengthen it? We're really building those initial skills at that age. And so as I start to think about the three and four-year-olds that we're providing the services to and even our elementary kids, we're really teaching them the dynamics of working virtually and how to take instruction in when it comes to remote learning. So there's a lot of skills that we're working there, but I know our early childhood special education teachers and our early learning services teachers are monitoring that with our students and really seeing how much is enough. And similar, I think what I heard our elementary, middle and high school principal say is, how do we build on to that or reduce that depending on the needs of those students? So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then let's move on to our next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Corman. I would be remiss if I didn't say one of the silver linings going through this has been the, what I hope you're seeing tonight and other presentations is just how closely our district is working together. There are so many times that we've asked questions as we plan. And it's Brett McIntyre's team is like, oh, we've already figured that out. Here's what we've done in the past. And so it's just really, it's just a really nice synergy to have us all working together. And really, our special education team has had to figure this out in the past for different reasons. And we're just happy that we get to consult with them. It's the same with our with our learning supports team. We were asking questions about social emotional work and they raised their hand and say, oh, we've already figured that out. And so I, again, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about how well, I think, given given world pandemics, I think, you know, stress can do lots of different things to teams. And I've just been proud to be part of this team, but all the collegiality that's come together around this. So that was appropriate to mention there because what Director McIntyre talked about, you'll see tenants of that throughout our presentation. And then as we move into the into the English language learners, learners, as an example, every school, you know, and it's different by level, but every school has a mechanism, a group of adults that gets together to talk about students who might be struggling. And so, you know, at the elementary level, it's called the ISST team. So you've got your social worker, your psychologist, you might have an intervention teacher, the principal. And teachers come and say, hey, student X is really struggling here. And the professionals get together and they come up with, how could we intervene and provide one-on-one support for this student? So when we talk about distance learning 2.0 with supports, you've heard a lot about the supports from Principal Klein, Ingman and Anderson and Executive Director McIntyre. But really what we're talking about is how do we replicate that model? And so how can we, how can a teacher say, hey, student X is really struggling and bringing it back to that team to make sure those supports are perfect for the student who needs the help? And some of those things that might, we might look at that might trigger that a need for support is, what if a student isn't showing up for the synchronous learning? You know, what's happening there? What questions might we ask there? What happens about work completion? What if we're noticing that they're disengaging during synchronous learning? I mean, all those things that our teachers are trained in. And if we hearken back to the days of traditional school that they would pick up on, we want them to pick up on that as well in this environment and then bring those concerns to a site lead or a team lead or a district lead and begin to give those supports to students that are needed. And so that's when we talk about distance learning with supports, we're really intentional about making sure that we're watching to see who needs the supports and being able to respond, just like we did when we were in traditional school. And someday we'll go back there. I'll move over to the English language learners and spend just a couple of minutes talking about what what might these schedules that you show tonight look like for an English language learner? And I'd say from an overarching standpoint, they would look exactly the same. Executive Director McIntyre talked about, you know, this being, the schedules being the home base of the schedules, but also in that will be spaces for meeting the needs of many of our students, our English language learners included. So a couple of highlights I'd want to address, working on safe testing of our new students so that the identification is appropriate and we can deliver services to our English language learners. And so currently looking at how can we bring our new students to the district in to make sure that we get them the testing that's needed so that we can provide the services that's needed. And that's being done currently as we try to figure out how do we meet the needs of those students? Our EL teachers, our English language teachers will provide synchronous instruction to our English learners two or three times a week. And so in the spot, I know Director Bibi had asked about, you know, could it be manipulated, moved around? Absolutely. And that's what Principal Klein was talking about carving out space to make sure that those needs get met. EL groups, meeting with their EL teacher the same time every day to provide consistency for students and families, making sure that that happens, making sure that working with our teachers to set that schedule. Also for our EL students, after those schedules get released, as we talked about, about how do our EL teachers fit in their synchronous time in that? And then lastly, what I thought we did very well in the springtime is continuing to collaborate with classroom teachers to align instruction. And so those are really, really important parts that the students get their needs met through their programmatic needs, but also collaborating with the with the classroom teacher. We don't want to be tripping over each other and pulling kids out of instruction that they need. We know that some of the best instruction for all our learners is the direct instruction that happens from the classroom teacher. But how do we augment that? How do we make sure that we come alongside that? And how do we make sure that we are helping out, meeting the needs of those students? So you've heard lots of information tonight and I appreciate that time that you've taken to ask questions as, as we mentioned, excited, quite honestly, about Thursday night's community engagement night. We know that our community has lots of questions. And we hope that through your facilitation, that they've got a lot of answers tonight. We'll be ready again on Thursday night to answer more questions for our greater community about how this will work. And so we appreciate you taking the time to hear our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. That was all very helpful, great information that you have for us tonight. That was a lot of information. So thanks for, for all the work put onto it. Okay, so any questions about this last part of supports? Director Starks.
So I have a few questions. So Chair Corman, you know, you can go around to other board members. I'll just ask one at a time, but also for the executive directors and principals, if I'm asking questions that are, are too far in the future, please pull me back and say, we're not ready to answer that yet, or stay tuned on Thursday. So one of my questions is, I know that Executive Director Kubis, you've talked a lot about how you took feedback from parents and from students and from staff about distance learning 1.0, what worked, what didn't work, and that's why you're making 2.0. So my question is, once we get 2.0 up and running, give it a few weeks, how are we going to be soliciting feedback from students, from staff, from parents about what is working and what isn't working? You know, to continue to finesse the model?
Sure. Great, great question. So it feels like we've, we've been in front of the board a lot, so I apologize for the length of it. But if, if you recall, what, what started in, after March 15th of last year is we got a distance learning group together, administrators, directors, and teachers. And we started talking about, twice a week, what's going well? What are we hearing from our parents? What are we hearing from the teachers? What are we hearing from students? And we continuous, did continuous improvement on the fly. And so we endeavor to do that exact same thing. We want to make sure that we're hearing information in real time about what's working and what's not working and factor it into the planning that's gone on. That was a very successful endeavor. And I think yeah, sometimes when you're, when you're planning something and you think you've got everything figured out, sometimes it's hard to go to hear people say, well, what about this or this or this? That's a really difficult thing because you're personally invested in it. But I was really proud of that team who took that criticism and those accolades both and used it to make a better model. So we endeavor to do the same process this year, Director Stark, sorry, to get, make sure that we're getting feedback and making sure that we're continuing to move the model. I referenced it once before, we're combining that hybrid group with the distance learning group, Director Flopmeier is going to be running that group, facilitating that group, and following that same model about soliciting feedback and making changes as we go.
Thank you. Director Sorum.
Thank you. I wanted just to, to call attention to the fact, you know, when we've talked about so much of this and the preparation going into it, the preparedness plan that we put into effect way back at the beginning is still in place with the schools cleaning and, and a whole variety of, of all of the safety and everything else with the equipment that we have. So none of that has gone away. We still have the, the, the needs for the health and safety precautions and various other things. So that should really, and I, I don't know how many people have seen it, but when we talked about it earlier, when we were talking on, with the other board meetings, that that is still in place and should satisfy an awful lot of parents and staff and students in terms of all of the precautions and everything else that Jackie Johns has presented for us in the past. And so I just wanted to call attention to that again, that we have all that in place and it's very helpful and thorough. So thank you for that.
Other questions? Director Olson.
I'm just wondering, so when it's discussed the possibility of transitioning to hybrid, would that be, would we make sure that that was done during the beginning of a new semester or some kind of specific transition time?
Okay, I'll take that question, Director Olson. So we've talked about, I would say, all of the above. And so we're committed to, and we've talked about tonight, about always looking at our data, looking at what we can accomplish, looking at what other school districts are doing. That is something we'll continue to do. It has been talked about in both, both lights that the most natural way to move from one model to another might be at a traditional grading time. We've also talked about the most, the best time to move to a different model is when it's time to move to a different model. And so we, you know, we haven't really anchored ourselves in one or the other. We're open to committing to starting positively in distance learning and continuing to look at what is the, you know, when we get to move into the neck, the least restricted, the next least restrictive environment, when is the best time to do that?
Thank you. And yes, I'm, I don't think we should hurry that by any means. I just know that some people have wondered if there would be a specific transition time. So thank you.
Thank you.
I might add, if you, if you, I'm sorry, Chair Corman, if you recall, we, at last week's meeting, we talked about coming back to the board to give an update near the end of September. And so I would remind, remind everyone of that.
Thank you. Nobody else? Any questions? Director Starks, I know you have more questions, so you can go ahead and.
I do, but I want to give everybody else their chance to ask. This question is actually for Executive Director Wiser, but in, if you would rather, we wait and you just discuss this on Thursday or whatnot, but I, I, as many parents logged into the hub today to see my children's teachers' assignments and noticed some changes in the hub that I'm actually really excited about. So I don't know if you're willing to talk about some of those changes now and how they're gonna support distance learning, if you want to wait till Thursday, you know, whatever. But I just wanted to recognize that I saw some changes that I'm pretty, pretty excited about. I've got middle school and high school students, so I don't know if it's the same for elementary school students or not.
I'll, I'll always tune in for a compliment. Thank you for that, Director Starks. I don't have anything prepared, but I will just add that we're trying to reflect some of the changes that you've heard tonight. And so that you heard the secondary say that students will check in every day. We tried to make that process more streamlined via the hub over what, what students experienced in the spring. I heard Principal Klein, I think, talked about a new tool that we're adopting as a district called Remind to get more information in a streamlined manner via text to families. And so, yeah, we've been doing our work on the tech side to try to make this a real smooth experience in the fall.
Thank you. From, from a parent that has, you know, three children doing distance learning, the more streamlined things can be and the more they're all in one place is very helpful. So I appreciate your work on, on supporting that.
Definitely. Thank you. Anyone else? No other questions? I do have a couple of questions. Okay, going back to the social, emotional learning, I'm, I'm sorry, it seems like I'm obsessed with that today. But I just think it's such an important component, especially this year when things are so challenging. It's so different for our kids. I think it's very important to put a, a big emphasis on this, in this area. And so this is in regards of professional development for staff members and especially our educators around this, this topic. If we're gonna be implementing this or having this type of approach in multiple conversations with kids, you know, from kindergarten all the way up to 12 graders. Do staff member, do staff members recognize the whole concept of social emotional learning? And would there be any additional training about this during this week before students are?
I can jump in if that's okay. Jason Anderson, Principal Jefferson, my kids roadside another and another being allowed. So I'll try to hopefully, I could be able to hear me. But so yes, I mean, I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of, you know, many hundreds of staff members and licensed teachers we have in our buildings. But I do think every building is making social emotional learning and connection a priority in a distance learning world. The strategies are being shared, both being modeled as well as shared. Teachers are, are extremely creative and resourceful in their own networks of finding strategies to, to work in particular grade levels and content areas. And so, yes, I can assure, assure you and the public that this, this focus on connection and social emotional learning in digital world has been highly focused and will continue to be highly focused, prioritized by professional, through professional development and then through our, through our proven process throughout the year.
Thank you. I think it's just very important, as we, we know that it can also be overwhelming for educators as well. You know, the concept is, seems to be an easy concept to understand and and to utilize in our classes, but it's, it's not that, that easy. You know, it has different levels, as you know. Okay, and the last one, the Office of Educational Equity. I don't know if someone could speak about that. What is, what would be the role of a staff from the Office of Educational Equity during this distance learning time?
Yeah, I'll take that, Chair Corman. That's a great question. They have, as I talked about before, about the partnerships that have, have kind of risen, given this, that their, their department has just been priceless when it comes to reaching out and making connections with our, what I would call our historically disenfranchised families. We know, as I've shared before, in this setting, we know that many of our families in Bloomington, quite frankly, just don't trust the school system. And so they make a lot of their decisions and they make, get a lot of their information through close relationships. And we know that our Office of Educational Equity provides that safe relationship on behalf of our school district. They've been involved in our planning as we move forward. You know, as, I'll cite one example. I know that the Office of Educational Equity and our Director of EL Services, Beth Stengline, have worked together on a multicultural document, I'm sorry, multicultural communication document for our families to walk our teachers through, you know, what are the best practices when reaching out to families? When we talk about, you know, Principal Klein talked about at the very beginning of the year, you know, each teacher is going to be reaching out to their student at the elementary level. And so that document is, is being used to help our teachers reach out to our families who English might not be their first language. That document and that work has been created in concert with our Office of Educational Equity. And so as we look at distance learning 2.0 with supports, I talked a little bit about how that might happen. We count our cultural liaisons as a group of staff members who will provide incredible support to our families. As we look down that, you know, sports analogy, sorry, but we look down that bench to see who can provide its supports, we know that our cultural liaisons are trained incredibly well in providing those supports.
Great. Great. Well, thank you, everyone. And lastly, I'd like to call on Executive Director of Relations, Mr. Rick Cupman, to please tell the public a little bit more about this community engagement event on Thursday night.
Thank you, Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. We are excited about the communication event on Thursday because we will be bringing in principals who will share, much like tonight, a deeper dive into the distance learning 2.0 plus supports model. We've asked principals to prepare for sharing what it will be like for students in preschool, elementary, middle, high school. And what that, what it will look like on a, on a daily and weekly basis, including those, those supports. And as you heard also tonight, Jeff McIntyre will be there to talk about the special education aspect. All of these, the reason we're focusing on this, obviously, this is the, the learning model that will start the year. But in addition, we've been receiving feedback and questions and comments to the form that we shared with parents last Thursday. And most of it is based on distance learning and some of the related aspects of it. So what I believe we're seeing in those comments and those questions is the, the need to, to be better prepared for what to expect in the distance learning. It, it's now, as Mr. Kubis and others have shared, it's what I believe the board and administration, it's not what we would like to have started the school year with, given the, the conditions. But it's what we'll start the school year with, with the commitment that, as Mr. Kubis said, to review and look at a way to get kids back into school at some point when it, when it's safe to do so and when we well, we can line up staff with the, the needs that are at our elementary, middle, and high schools. So it's seven to eight thirty. It's a live virtual event. Presenters will be presenting from the, the school board room and will take questions that evening as well as those that we've received. And hopefully we'll get to a lot of them to answer parents' questions. But tune in, BCTV will be carrying it live and we'll, we'll continue to share information about how to access the, not only the BCT live, but with live streaming options as well.
Well, thank you. And thanks, everyone. This is the end of this presentation. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into our next part of our agenda. We have board member reports. Does anybody have reports? Director Olson.
Okay. Hi. First of all, I did want to mention that I'm really excited about the can-do attitude of our presenters. And we've received messages from teachers who are excited about getting to work on this distance learning and that families will, you know, match that can-do attitude as much as possible. I know it's not easy, but I think it will be good for our children, our students. So there were a lot of, I attended workshops, summer seminars through MSBA, and I learned a lot. So I don't want to go through all of it because it would take too much time as to how much I've learned. But I just wanted to touch on, one of the seminars was Race 101. And I'd like to recommend the video, The Power of Illusion. I know that Chair Corman, you said you've seen that as well. It addresses how race is not impartial or objective at all. It was constructed to classify and divide through simple external differences and that there are no genetic markers that define race. And we watched a little part of it. A biological anthropologist conducted a DNA workshop for high school students. And I thought this would be amazing if we could do something like this in our schools for our students. But they conducted a DNA workshop where they were reading about the biology of human deviation in which they compared genetic similarities and differences amongst themselves. And they had to guess who they were most genetically similar to within the class. And I don't know if I should say the answer to that because it was a surprise, but, you know, just in case we were to ever be able to do that, or if anybody wants to watch that video, The Power of Illusion. But I highly recommend it. It was fascinating.
Thank you. Director Starks.
Yes, so Director Olson, as she mentioned, I also did the MSBA summer training. So I appreciate that our statewide organization allows for us, especially those of us new school board members who are still only about seven months into our roles to be able to get to us some really valuable information. So that was awesome. I also this morning was able to join the Early Childhood Special Education Team in their virtual meeting that they had. So I want to extend thank you to Michelle Quickstead for the invitation to join and to say hi. And, you know, I, I've been a teacher that's gone to Back to School Week and, and this is like Back to School Week on steroids. I don't know how else to explain it, but the amount of work that teachers are having to do above and beyond what they normally do in a given year is pretty amazing. So I just want to say thank you to all the teachers, all the staff, everybody. And I'm very grateful that we gave that extra week of time that we were able to push back the beginning of the school year to September 8th, because I really think it's going to be a valuable time for them. So just thank you to everyone that is putting their time and energy in these next few weeks to get distance learning 2.0, 2.0 off the ground. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Director Steiger.
Thank you, Chair Corman. I had a chance to visit our kid safari program that is operating this summer. And it just happened to be that I And it just happened to be that I picked a rainy day, so they all were inside. There was no outside activities that time, which, you know, very much limits a lot of what they can do when they're always inside, which also makes you think about how it'll be in the winter, how that will work with students that far apart and how we'll manage that in a hybrid situation once winter comes. So it's another consideration. But I just wanted to thank all the kids, safari staff, that have been there and have been providing childcare for essential workers or tier-one workers since March. And so they have managed to provide a safe environment and managed to keep kids busy all summer and been very creative in finding new ways to do that while maintaining, keeping everybody six feet apart. So thank you.
Director Bibi.
Yeah, I echo the same things as Maya. I went to the same workshop with the Minnesota School Board Association and also with Heather and just her appreciation for the teachers. I too, like Dawn, was able to go and see the childcare that they were doing. And because of connection with a bicycling group, they were able to have the kids ride bikes in the parking lot because it wasn't raining the day I was there. And it was quite warm, but it was a great opportunity. I saw the kids really enjoying the outdoor time. And I just appreciate those that have been working, are looking for more staff that can come alongside and help with this program. So if you know somebody that has experience working with kids and, you know, would be an asset to our district, please ask them to apply. Another thing is I had a meeting with Chair Nellie and Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Director Bennett, to discuss just some more expectations and the excitement we have about our Bloomington Student Advisory Council in looking for the student voice on our board. So I will look forward to meeting with my chair and then hopefully getting a date set for us to meet with our student representatives this coming month that's bringing our students back to us. So there were also some legislative updates that were brought by Terry Morrow from the Minnesota School Board Association. And today we received a voter guide with questions to ask our representatives or those that are running for representatives at the local and at the federal level. So it would be great for each of us to get those and to ask those hard questions and to get some good answers. So I encourage you to do that as part of the Legislative Committee and read your MSBA most recent email with other things that are very helpful to this pertinent time about funding from the CARES Act and also from the state. So thank you and really appreciate it tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. I also had the opportunity to attend the MSBA meeting where the similar topics were addressed, you know, issues of voting and as well as funding. So very important that you check out the website that they got. And then also toured the childcare at Inimount. I also enjoyed the tour. You know, Director Bennett was there, Director Bibi too. And we walked through the classrooms and had an opportunity to see the kids working with the whole social distance, setting precautions and wearing their masks and everybody being really careful. And I truly enjoyed seeing the kids and staff members working together. So really appreciated that opportunity to be there. Okay, so we go to Superintendent's report. Superintendent Les Fujitaki, please.
Thank you, Chair Corman. I'll share some of my time with Executive Director of Community Relations, Rick Kaufman. He has some exciting and timely news about our new development. Rick, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. We are pleased to announce that Bloomington will co-partner with MDH, the City of Bloomington, PICA Head Start on a community testing event next Tuesday, September 1st, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM in the Kennedy High School parking lot. It is a drive-up. Restriction for the general public is now open. There is a registration link for that. There are approximately 304 testing tests available for the general public. There's also a large number of tests that are being set aside for our BIPOC community in Bloomington, Richfield, and Edina, as Bloomington Public Health does serve those three communities. The Office of Educational Equity, you know, Wade Ardenley and her amazing team have been working with us and the other partners on the planning, along with Jackie Johns, Tim Reebok, and others to begin a specific outreach tomorrow to our BIPOC community to get as many of them registered for that test. We'll be providing transportation for families from two sites, and we won't announce those yet because we're still waiting to confirm those. But we're really excited because we hope that the plan is to have 1,200 people tested. It is free. You don't need any insurance, insurance, I should say. But by registering, you have a slot to come in and get tested. Whether you feel like you are ill or not, it is really important to get tested with this availability. So we'll be getting more information out tomorrow, but we feel really good about the fact that we can bring this to our community. It's being led by, like I said, all of our partners, but Josh Sergeymaki, who is with the State Emergency Operations Center, is a head of the statewide COVID-19 testing. And a parent in our community with two children in our district, he's been working with us and the partners to bring this to our community. So we're excited by it. So stay tuned for more information, but the links are available on the City of Bloomington website, the general public one. And as I said, we'll target our BIPOC community with a specific link for those to be fit as well.
Thank you, Rick. I'll take this opportunity to recognize and thank Bloomington Educational Cable Television, also known as BECTV, for producing tonight's board meeting and all our board sessions. BECTV deserves recognition and appreciation because we continue to do, in the midst of this pandemic, an excellent job of helping the board communicate, engage with the community. Leading BECTV is Tom Ringdahl, their director. Please note that Tom has been serving with distinction our school community and our city for 40 years. That's four zero years. Therefore, on behalf of the school board and our school community, thanks, Tom, to you and your team for exemplary services and all your service to the school district, Tom. Thank you. That concludes my report. Chair Corman, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ringo. Any other business? Director Starks.
So I wanted to say this in my board report, but I didn't want to talk before Superintendent Fujitaki did about Mr. Ringels. So just as a personal note, I am an alumni of BECTV. My husband is an alumni of BECTV. We met there. And I was actually talking to my husband today. I'm like, most of our wedding party was from the EC. Oldest child is named after Tom Ringdahl. We have a very strong connection with EC. But the amount of students that Tom Ringdahl has impacted in a positive way is we can't even identify. He is one of the most important people in so many students' lives. And I am just want to, when I saw his name on the list of folks in our district and saw the number 40 behind it, it just brought tears to my eyes. So on behalf of alumni of BECTV and those that are currently working with you, Tom, thank you so much for everything you've done for our community and for our students and for everyone that you have interacted with in your 40 years here. Thank you.
Thank you. Give another clap to Mr. Ringo. You and your team do an excellent job. Thank you. Okay, so we'll come to the end of our meeting. This is a German time. So is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Salmo? Bibi?
Okay, we'll move by. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, second by Bennett. Although you may be adjourned in the meeting, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, this is seven, and so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.